Okay, I'll call the meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education to order. It's Monday, July 9th, 2018. We are at the Oregon High School Innovation Center. You will note on my right, the camera's left, Katie Hites has filled in now and succeeded Janie Wick, so your first night, and you stop me at any point in time, okay? Good. Will you call the roll?
Ms. Feeney?
Present.
Ms. Oderico?
Here.
Ms. Flanagan?
Here.
Mr. Pankratz?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Yo.
Mr. LeBrun? Mr. Zock?
Present. The board has a quorum, and Mr. LeBrun texted me. He's on the way from Burlington, so he said he would be a few minutes late. So we will note his arrival when he gets here. I have proof that the meeting has been appropriately noticed under Wisconsin Open Meetings Law. Those documents will be with Ms. Hites if anyone wants to inspect them. Tonight's agenda includes our usual A, B, and C discussion-action items. We're going to be talking about food service pricing, a reimbursement resolution fund, which we may just discuss but not formally approve this evening. We'll talk about that. The school board apportionment task force charter, and then committee reports, and then a work session on student growth, and then regular informational items. I would need a motion to approve the agenda as it was posted.
Ms. Flanagan with the motion. Is there a second?
Ms. Feeney with the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as posted signify by saying aye. Aye. Post that motion carries by unanimous voice vote. Under our agenda, A, consent calendar. Is there any item that any board member wishes to have removed? Okay, seeing none, I would make a need a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar. And you will...
To approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Kraus with the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pankratz with the second. There have been a couple of changes to the minutes that Troy caught, so those have been added more in terms of replacing Mr. Raymond with Mr. Pankratz's name, and then a typo. So we've corrected those. We still miss Jeff, but we like you, Troy. But just every once in a while, we slip up that way. And then you'll have at your desk an updated new staffing assignments with contract changes. Those are included in this motion. And then a resignations at your table as well. Those are also included. Seeing no discussion or having no discussion, would you call the roll? Ms. Hites, because we do have a resignation and contracts.
Mr. Kraus?
Yes.
Mr. Pankratz?
Yes.
Ms. Feeney?
Yes.
Ms. Oderico?
Yes.
Mr. Zock?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes.
Mr. LeBrun?
Motion passes by a 6-0 vote. Communication from the public. The Board Policy 180.04 permits the public to address the board at its board meetings. And we have someone ready to speak with us tonight, and Jason Strauss, who is from the Swan Creek neighborhood, has sent us an email. I think all of you got that in June, but would like to specifically address the board. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you.
There's an on-off button up there, and the floor is yours.
Is that right?
Yeah, the floor is yours.
Well, my name is Jason Strauss, and I live at 5212 Blazing Star Lane. And first of all, I just want to thank all of you for serving on a school board. All of you could be spending your time right now with your friends and family on this beautiful night, but you are here because you care about children, and you're willing to do the difficult, thankless work that you all do. In case you don't know the history, in 2002, the Swan Creek neighborhood was transferred from Oregon School District to the Madison Metropolitan School District against the wishes of the residents of Swan Creek. The transfer was not initiated by the residents. As a result, many of the residents immediately opened and enrolled their kids to Oregon. Our kids play in your youth sports leagues. We take swim lessons at the Oregon pool. Our children have playdates with other Oregon children. And a bus route was even added that goes right by Swan Creek to pick up all the open-enrolled students. And I'm sure you've seen the Oregon School District map, and you can see that Swan Creek is literally surrounded by the Oregon School District. Our only crime was that we were the first neighborhood to be developed. If we were the second or the third neighborhood to be developed, I'm sure that you wouldn't even contemplate transferring a neighborhood. The 2002 border agreement with Madison, one of the reasons why it went through is Madison, and I'm quoting here, Madison wanted to enhance the number of students attending Madison Metropolitan School District. But in reality, that never happened. Right now, we have been going house by house, street by street, collecting signatures. And as we've done this, we have found that the vast majority of students open and enroll to Oregon. Some go to private school, and only a small number actually attend the Madison Metropolitan School District. And the Oregon schools, their open enrollment rate is about 10% coming in. And similarly, the Madison school has almost the same percentage leaving through open enrollment. So in my opinion, it's time to recognize what has already happened in fact, and that our kids are attending the Oregon School District. So I'm here tonight just to put a name, a face to the name for our neighborhood, and to show you that we've started the process of collecting signatures. Now, the deadline's February 1st, and so I just came here tonight to show you that we are beginning this process now, because I have found, as a teacher in the Verone Area School District for 20 years, that the best decisions are made when people are given ample time to reflect, gather data, and think carefully. What I have found so far, as we've gone through the neighborhood, it's about 80% want to switch, about 10% no, and about 10% say they have no opinion either way. I have to admit that the heat, rain, and mosquitoes have hampered us, but I'm very confident that we'll be able to canvas the entire neighborhood and achieve our goal. I'm hoping to wrap it up by September. But I'm suggesting that you reach out to Madison now and confer with them about the nullification of the 2002 agreement. And I don't know if you've seen the Madison long-term building plan, but in their building plan, they say that they want to reach out to Oregon to rationalize their southern border. That's their words, not mine. So we have been in contact with Madison, with their school board and their superintendent, and we've come to you first simply because you're the first Monday of the month. And so I'll be attending Madison's. They're the last Monday of the month. And I will be delivering the same message to them as I'm delivering to you tonight. But one message you will never hear me deliver is any message that disparages any school or any school district. You guys volunteer your time because you care about kids. School board members across the state volunteer their time because they care about kids. So I admire anybody who spends their time advocating on behalf of children. So now's the time to put politics aside, do what's right for kids, formally end this agreement, and recognize what in reality has happened anyhow. And so I want to thank you once again for your time and the time tonight to address the... Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Jason and I had a communication today, and rest assured, he could have brought a whole lot of people that would have come in and said the same thing, and we would have had the show. And Jason said, no, he's going to be the spokesperson, but there are a lot of people who support his message. And so we appreciate facilitating our time tonight and being the spokesperson for your group to deliver the message. I talked with him to reach out to the Madison School District and Dr. Cheatham and just indicate action with us that we would be willing to listen as an administrative team and as a district, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks very much. And if you have any more information for us, and you can shoot it to us, shoot it to me and Brian, and we'll make sure that the board gets it.
Sure. And I was just going to say, you know, I've been to school board meetings, I've run it, and my own opinion is having 100 people deliver the same message after about three people, it's become redundant, so.
Great.
So I wanted to respect your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who... Hello, Mr. LeBrun. Welcome. You made good time. You sat a few minutes late, and you were right on the button. Is there anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move to information items. OEA report. I don't see anybody from the OEA, so we'll note that. And we don't have a student rep, so we don't have that on the agenda this tonight. But Jim, at some point, would we should talk about next semester? You got somebody in mind? Okay.
Similar situation with two students are plugged into to attend some summer meetings as well, so I think maybe by next time...
That would be great. Thanks. That takes us to Agenda Item D, Discussion Action Items. D1 is food service pricing. Recommendation of the administration is a five cent increase for lunch and breakfast, but I'll turn the floor over to Andy Wyland.
Good evening. This is an item that we typically bring to you every July in preparation for putting the information out to our parents in registration, which is actually, we're starting to talk about that, so that's going to happen in August here. So the food service fund has been pretty stable. Actually, did really well this year. We had significant amount of capital expenditures. We actually bought two different sets of combi ovens, one at the school and one at Rome Corners. We still, at this point in time, I qualify it because we haven't done the audit yet, are looking at probably increasing fund balance a little bit by about $11,000. We are still recommending a nickel increase. Part of that is, hopefully, if the referendum passes, we are anticipating another kitchen in a school, and there are some fixed costs associated with kitchens in schools. And some of those kids will be coming from other buildings, and so having a little bit more of a buffer in the budget would be good as we get to a normal of instead of having... I need to count the number of kitchens here.
This week, so we have a chance to look at it. But those are the sort of questions, Dan, exactly, that we're going to bang onto. And this gives us a sense, I don't know that they're targeting any one of these numbers, but within that range between 1.5 million to 3 million, this would be the tax impact. The other thing on the sheet is that in terms of the PMA capital estimate, I just talked with Brian, he's using as the constant their scenario 1B that we got from Michelle and PMA. You know, we've got two other senior scenarios with a different rate per 100,000, depending on how we want to amortize that, but he just wanted to show with the recurring as the variable what that impact would look like, so. And what Andy's prepared, I think you will really see it, because it's an itemization. It's not a recurring number. It adds up to a large recurring number, but you can go line by line on the spreadsheet and see exactly what we've included. And ideally, when you receive it, there will not be a gap, although we'll test it when we send it to you tomorrow. And if you identify something that you think we've missed, we have a couple of days to make the change. I think the point that I want you to have as a takeaway, and Andy underscored it, we looked at our other three schools. We looked from an equity standpoint. We want to make sure that the educational experience at all four elementary schools is similar, and that students have a similar level of support in the new school as well as the three existing schools. So that's sort of the framework behind it. If you don't have any further questions, and we can certainly come back, I'll draw your attention to the very last board document. And Katie has some additional copies if you'd prefer a paper copy. If you're looking electronically, it's the very last document. If you need another document, we can send it around. This is Finn, it's on, yes, correct, it's on the Findorf letterhead, and it's called Pre-Referendum Budget Summary. And under the first section are expenses related to the K6. That's district-wide. Findorf included that under the K6 school. And as we walk down that list, you can see $32 million roughly is the new construction cost. Then the solar panel system at 1.6, geothermal at 550, everyone following with me. Then the school safety and security, which is an additional budget over and above the K6. We should have separated that. And then battery storage, which is part of the green and net zero school. Then if we jump down, you'll notice we do know how to spell Netherwood correctly. We missed that. RCI has some solar panels as well as an outdoor classroom. You might recall, if you attended a few different of our focus groups, we had some parents asking about outdoor classrooms at RCI. We likely could have put an outdoor classroom in here for the middle school as well, but Prairie View and Netherwood, as you know, share an outdoor classroom, so we looked at one for RCI as well as Brooklyn. Then at Netherwood, we have no solar panels right now. Again, we have no solar panels at RCI. At Prairie View, we don't have solar panels, so we included them there. And then at Brooklyn, we do have solar panels that were part of the 2014 referendum, and we included the outdoor classroom. One thing that Steve mentioned, the direction we're really looking from the board on, is if we're going to... Are we going to include? You sort of have two choices. You could prepare the referendum that focuses solely on the K6 construction and the land acquisition and all the soft costs, and that to include that are listed under the K6 school. There's likely not a right or wrong answer. It's more of clearly the highest priority is getting new facility space where we can move students into that space. But we wanted to give you a menu, and we are happy to answer questions. We've met with Findorf and Bray a couple of different times. To get to this week, Monday, the Findorf team made one final run at the numbers to make sure that they were as accurate as possible for meeting. And in case you have ever visited Sun Prairie, they are modeling the school construction costs after a certain data for the project. So Andy, if I've missed something, I'd like to give Andy an opportunity to highlight anything I missed, and then to see the comments that you have as board members.
I think you covered everything. It's in the soft cost number at the bottom.
And just in terms of still in the negotiations process, we didn't want to separate the budget for land costs into this. It also includes architectural and engineering fees. It also includes owner's contingency, which we could eliminate the owner's contingency and go with $0. I don't think that's a wise thing to do, especially given all the challenges with construction. There are cost extension that we may or may not need. So there's a little flexibility in that $10.6 million. And it includes on a project of this size, we're just under $2 million, somewhere between 1.6 and 1.7 million. Okay, I'm going to... We'll walk through that. And I think in terms of how we approach this is, and look at the new K6 school and see if we're... One of the things, is it net zero or zero net?
Net zero.
Net zero? Because we've got the solar and geothermal, you know, that's the board's direction to go that direction and include those costs. And so the K6 has one conversation with that. And then the second part of that conversation is then to talk about the items, the K6, and including those figures and those projects in this referendum. Okay? Everybody comfortable with going that way? Okay, so questions? I'm going to go this way and then this way. Barb?
Do we have any estimate on the payback for the solar systems?
We don't. We're actually meeting with the engineers and everything, I believe, next week or the week after, to start kind of having those discussions and try to figure that out. As I've talked before, the problem with K6, and it's tough for... It's more of a, how do I say this? It's more of a calming effect on demand. It's pretty steady, where solar, you know, all of a sudden, you're producing lots of energy, cloud goes by, and it's air conditioners are still running, and where are the energy that those chillers are using? So geothermal is a little bit better in that way. It actually is thermal storage. It's just using the earth for it.
Okay.
Andy, could you also comment on the engineering firm?
Yes.
Because this is the same...
...use on track record with this firm.
Yeah. We've used sustainable engineering. Everybody uses them. The state of Wisconsin uses them. There are a couple gentlemen, actually, from overseas, who use a lot more of these types of technologies.
Efficiency and creating your own energy is, there is a payback, and it is a number that's great to talk about. But I think the more important question is, is how are we going to use this technology to help teach our students in this school and perhaps in the wider community about the importance of environmental structures and environmental ways of building and living, but also how many tons of carbon are we saving? I think that may be even a more important question for us to consider when we're looking at this. So those are a couple of questions that I would like to discuss or to see if anybody has answers for. Is there projection in the amount of carbon that we can save, given these particular expenditures? How does... Another question I forgot to mention was, how is this going to impact the view of our school district in the community? How is it going to impact the view of our school district in the wider community, in the state, or maybe even nationally, as people are moving in this direction internationally? So my gut feeling, though I'm not an expert on this by any means, is that it's going to be a positive impact for the idea behind it, the actual savings in carbon, and the educational opportunities for our kids. So that's more of a statement, but also the question is, will we be able to look at any numbers about carbon or energy savings?
So I'm kind of talking off the hip here, but if we actually are successful and build the net zero building, then my theory would be that it's, there's no impact on carbon, zero carbon, because there will be limited, if any, natural gas usage of the building. So then you're just having to compensate for electricity. And if you're making as much electricity, the concept of net zero, maybe not at the right time, right? It might be in the winter, we're using some electricity, but we're giving back to the utility that same energy, that energy in the summer, then the concept is it doesn't have a carbon footprint.
I guess...
And I think we can work on that, because that's part of the whole marketing scheme. If you go with a net zero, not only is there a payback, you know, it's a cost that we recoup over the line, that's the obvious marketing piece, but that educational piece ties in with our policy as well, and we can work on getting what we're saving in terms of a carbon expenditure, as if we hadn't built a regular building, so.
Right. So compared to like an average building...
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that pretty easily. Good points. Any other questions, Dan? Okay. Troy?
Just a comment on the outdoor classroom costs, the $250,000 per site. That number just stands out to me as being pretty high. I don't know if you guys know if that's around the cost of the Netherwood Prairie View site, or...
It's hard to say, because there was all kinds of stormwater work, as well as the parking lot was basically redesigned between Netherwood and Prairie View on the east side, west side of the building there. So we didn't really have a good way to pull that out. So we just basically trusted Findorf in that, using that quarter million dollar number.
Yeah, it just stands out to me as being high.
Yeah, you know, I think it really depends on what you do, right? We were talking about, you got to create this stair thing. Well, you can do that by going down in the ground, which could create some stormwater issues, probably will create some stormwater issues, or you can go up. And so that would be another way to look at it. There's going to be some safety issues that you're going to have to deal with and that type of thing, but different ways to accomplish the same thing.
Yep. That's all I have.
Courtney?
I don't. Everyone's asked the questions I have to go.
Same with me. So, good. Good discussion. Any generation of any other questions as we've gone through? Okay, so the first thing we should do is, the numbers before us, which are going to drive our capital round number, is the new construction costs of approximately $32 million are obvious, but the option point for us is whether we want to go with a net zero building there and go through that. Because I think probably the best way to do that is just thumbs up sideways or down in terms of where you're at, and that'll determine whether we have any discussion on that. Okay? Are we okay with doing a net zero at the K6 with the costs that are identified with that? Thumbs? Anybody sideways? Would you... Your thought?
I don't know what to compare it to.
Okay.
There's, as compared to how much for a non-net zero building?
Right. It's not just the subtraction of those two categories, there's additional costs.
Yeah. Go ahead.
If we realize that the cost of a non-net zero building were $20 million, the question is, would we spend an extra $12 million for a net zero building? And so I don't have a benchmark. So I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but I'm not saying it's a good idea. And to Dan's point, I think when it comes to especially energy efficiency, you know, if money weren't the issue, if money really weren't the issue, let's have twice as many solar panels. Let's have twice the size geothermal system. So I do think, I think we need to have a clear understanding of what is our objective here. Our objective is to make sure we have the right school in the right place for the number of students that we're expecting. And then, if we want to go above and beyond that, to have some marketing to go with it, to attract people here or to be a case study for the rest of the state, then let's at least understand what the investment is to make that happen.
And I've asked Brian to see if we can pull that number from Findorf, and what part of the $32 million would be directly representative of or attributed to a net zero in addition to the solar and geothermal components that are there?
So again, I'm not against it by any stretch.
You just want a little more information?
I just think it would be nice to understand, for this little bit more investment, here's what's possible.
Right. Anybody who wants to speak on it?
Well, you have to remember that while you, if you decided it was not going to be a net zero building, and you took away those two categories of cost, the solar and the geothermal, you still have to spend money to heat the building and cool the building. And so there is additional cost, even if you take that away. So it's not just as simple as saying, we're not going to do those two things, end of story.
Several months has been, a net zero building ties in really well, plus it creates us as a good role model. There's some efficiency and payback comes back in as well.
Also, Tim, I would say, to your point, zero building, school building in the state of Wisconsin, and one of the first in the country, but it would be a case study, so there is the possibility of that.
Barb?
We don't sell this as, you know, we want to show off how great we are. The climate situation is extremely urgent, and our students are going to be living already, they're going to be living with some really serious issues. And this is a small part that we can play in protecting their futures.
And I think that's reflected in our sustainability policy. So what I saw was, you know, the board, there is no down thumb, but... So what I saw was, you know, the board, there, there is no down thumb, but the board's comfortable generally consensus wise, including those costs, and Tim wants some numbers to crack a little bit. Fair enough? Everybody good with that? Brian?
Tim, just a clarifying question. So we phrase this right when we, when we talk to Findor? The marginal cost.
Yes, exactly. Is the Sun Prairie building, it obviously isn't a net zero building. They're using that to benchmark these costs to us.
Correct. It is not a net, it is not a net zero building.
So it sounds like a net zero building is, the marginal cost is pretty small for all the benefits.
Could be, but it's a good question to ask and a part of our due diligence to the taxpayers. All right, then we have the next category is school safety and security, which is clocks in all the buildings to replicate what we've got here where people do thumbs in terms of including it in this. Okay, mostly I'm, somebody flipped on me. Oh, okay, I'm a, I'm a sideways. And my sideways is premised on a thought that I would like this referendum to reflect costs only with the new K six school. Heard, asked referendum and I want to get people into an argument that we're spending money on other buildings that either should be part of our normal maintenance schedule or could have been, could have been included in that. So my own preference is that clean. Okay, but I'm seeing when in terms of a school's safety and security that people.
Question then, if we decided not to include it in the referendum, how long would it take for us to find that money in our maintenance budget?
Assuming that the operational override continued, which could be put into the, into the referendum. So we've got a general sense on the, that that item can be included. Okay? How about then let's, let's move to the outdoor Clark CI in, in Brooklyn. Thumbs on that and whether we include it in, and then we can discuss.
Lukewarm to, Barb and I nullify each other. So then it's sideways. Okay, let's, my, my point is the same. Okay, I, I want to keep this clean. Let's, Krista?
Yes, you know, my question is, some related to, is, should all of this be covered by our referendum or are there things in here that should be funded by private donors or by, it's a difficult question to me.
What over there?
I'm sorry, not specifically to that, but I agree. I agree that that's a question. This new construction include an outdoor classroom? Okay. And again, I think to Troy's point, I think it'd be helpful to understand, that is a lot of money, you know, when you're considering it's essentially landscaping, essential a long way when you're moving dirt and rocks around. So I'm just curious, that's all.
Anybody else want to talk about the classroom?
There's value in outdoor classrooms, otherwise we wouldn't have been doing it. We wouldn't have done the ones we've done. But I think it's a fair question of whether or not we need to spend that much and if there's another way to fund it.
Lukewarm from the board on that one. Prairie View, thumbs on that. Okay, again, a couple ups and a couple downs and sideways. My, my thought process is the same. I want to, yeah, keep that.
On that one, I mean, I'm all for the new school being an example of, I guess, a little less enthused about retrofitting existing schools. You know, the lifecycle cost just may not be there with the, on that, so if they did it, I might reconsider, but.
And then Barb and Dan, I, I know your positions are really strong from a sustainability standpoint that we ought to do as much as we can. Does that get you with feedback? How, how would you like the board to proceed?
Here's what I've heard. We're solid on the, all of the expenses in the, in the K six section. We're, we're solid on that. We, we have a question last of getting us to that. Wolford and I had a conversation about, but I'm not going to lay that number on the table because that's not fair to Matt. I want to make sure to be to, to dumb with the, with the marginal cost estimate there. The school is in, we won't list it under new K six school because of fusion. And in terms of the outdoor classrooms and the solar, I will say those are still operational priorities that we have. They're just, if you want to clarify my, I'm trying to repeat back to you what I heard. I didn't hear they're not a priority. I didn't hear they're, they're not worth pursuing. Heard was not part of my direction on how we can operationally tackle those issues in terms of how we could tackle that, but I want you to know it's, it's on our, on our parking lot and in our thinking for the.
Andy, anything to add to that?
Next steps. We're going to be getting the operational stuff from the administration, you know, this week and they're going to be working, given this direction with our legal counsel to develop the referendum questions for us and then also the dollar number so that we could fill in the reimbursement resolution. We'd prefer to meet next Monday, the, or the 18th, 5:30. Is there anybody who cannot make that? That's next Monday, a week from today. At all on Monday? It's the 18th. I can make it work. Well, you're going to move the policy anyway because we have a missing. I mean, that's up to you. You, you make that call on policy. Okay. Brian, you want to start like at six that night or 6:30 just out of force of habit? Time?
I'm good with 5:30 if that's better for your schedule.
Okay, what's later for you, Troy? 6:30 on the 18th? Seven is better for you, Krista? Is that okay, seven o'clock? Seven o'clock. I don't, I don't anticipate it's going to be a real long meeting. I mean, I think hour, hour and a half at the most. It depends on how many questions we have on the operational stuff, but the language Okay, seven o'clock on the 18th. Right here. And just to clarify, board members, I envision bringing three items to you that night. One item will be the debt resolution at the new dollar amount. A second item will be the recurring referendum resolution. And the third item is the reimbursement resolution. And I don't know if you want to give us any feedback on the 500 or the $400,000, excuse me, the $400,000 maintenance referendum. Andy and I have been looking at this recurring referendum dollar amount. And the reason we perceive that as a wash, it's currently baked in to our existing levy. So our, our thought was to include that. And you might recall, we've had a number of conversations over the last several years. And last time out, this was a separate standalone resolution. School boards are limited to only two questions. So we, you don't have the option. We don't have the option of recommending and you don't have the option of approving a third question. We'd have to bake this into the recurring referendum. Does that make, anybody have any issue with doing that? And again, Andy's thought and my thought was be conservative and don't roll $400,000 up, just put it at 400. Now I'm forgetting, we, we revised the maintenance referendum for 400, added $100,000 because of additional costs associated with construction. But this time we would leave it at, if it was approved, welcome your feedback on this.
Anybody have any problems with that? Or issues doing that since it's just a draw? Okay, I think you've got direction there.
Okay, we are set.
Okay.
When will we get that, that stuff that we're going to consider Wednesday? Will we get it prior to Wednesday to look at it or will we have to see it the first time?
Nope, we can get it, we can get it to you in a packet this Friday. Andy should have the recurring, all of the recurring expenses tomorrow. What we won't have, I don't know that we'll have tomorrow, the ratio that we're going to use in terms of this is coming from growth and this is coming from the tax levy. That might take a couple of days.
Why don't we just get it all in one?
So we'll give it all to you on Friday?
Yeah, because since we're on Wednesday, we'll have plenty of time to get it, rather than get it pieced together. And that gives you a little time to kind of assimilate that together. So we'll get that stuff on Friday and then add information and approving the referendum resolutions that we need, the three of them. The capital, the operational, and then the reimbursement. Okay? About referendum stuff. Okay. That takes us to information items F. District wide registration dates, Brian?
Okay, just a reminder, I wanted to get this on your calendar. We have two registration dates this year. Again, registration will be held and Tuesday, August 21st. Of course, we always welcome board members as much time as your schedule permits. Obviously, by that time we will have, we'll know what our referendum plan. I talked to Erica earlier. We're going to have a table about the November 6th referendum that we'll have set up for both of those states. We will work that table administratively, but board members, if you have 15 minutes, a half an hour to come and join us, it is a great opportunity to connect with, with, with community members.
Just a note, we did reduce the number of hours this year on both of those dates and we staggered them a little bit more and we added cameras because that seems to be our one, our one bottleneck right now. So a little bit different hours and we'll, we can get you that information.
So that concludes my registration. If you have a question, otherwise I will just keep rolling to superintendent's report, which will be uncharacteristically short tonight. The first item today of 2000 school, where we have, say, the lion's share, almost 98% of summer school right here at Oregon High School. And we had a great turnout today and it's a four week long program. We also have a six week program for some of our remedial classes. And knowing the participation rate and the commitment the summer creates and how parents have two or three computers at their home to log into the classes that their kids get, we had no complaints today, which was a great sign and we were off to a really good start. In terms of staffing positions for the 2018-19 school year, every day I look at our staffing chart, it seems we have, we have a young staff, so we have a lot of transition. We are now up to 61 licensed positions that we're filling and we have 43 of them filled. I know when we started, I said we, at this point, we have about 40 positions to fill. So that, that number will just continue to, to move up. In terms of percentages, we're at about 70% filled already. So that's a good, solid place to be and we will continue to work on that over the next several months. For those of you that, if you're interested, I don't know if I've made this offer or if Leslie's made this offer, but I'll make it again. Culturally responsive teaching in the brain is an excellent book by Zaretta Hammond. And if any of you are interested in it, we have copies, just reach out to Katie and or me and we will get you a copy of it. This is, this is a book that we used at retreat or at this year's administrative workshop and we read it throughout the school year as well. I believe Courtney gave me, there's a magazine that I know some of you receive, it's called Learning by Design, and there was a Net Zero Schools, the New Normal article Courtney gave me a couple of weeks ago, if you're, if you'd like to take a look at it. And it's written by, it's written by an architect. And then my last item is on our design team. We're school faculty and staff voice is at the very essence of our design process. We're, we're putting together a design team and obviously that will have a session from teachers. I believe I've already shared with you that Leslie, Andy and Carrie Majeski will be coaching end of July, beginning of, of August. And last time the board had decided, and that was Barb, on the, on the design process. So I'll have a conversation with Steve if, if he's going to, that's probably a time commitment because with all our, and with all of our design team members. I think our design team will be somewhere around that 15 to maybe 20 individuals and then obviously they, they will go out and, and keep all of our staff in, up, up to speed in terms of what's going on. The other thing that we talked with Findor from Bray will take, and there's a couple of schools that I think some of us may have visited is Cromery Middle School. And Cromery Middle School was built into a conservancy and it, it's just a beautiful, beautiful facility. Again, most of our K six folks didn't see that facility because that staff. We have three different schools in the Madison area, DeForest, Middleton and, and Lake Mills. Thank you, Carrie. And then in the Milwaukee area, it is, oh goodness, I didn't write them down. We have three to visit in, in, in the Milwaukee area as well. So we will keep you up to speed in terms of how that design process is going over the next couple of months. And Findor from Bray and our design team are excited to get that process going. So that concludes my report. Please don't get used to it being so short, but it is tonight.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Future agenda, we don't have anything put together for, did email you to talk about whether we could move the meeting on the 13th of August to the 20th because of conflicts. So we. So we, anybody? This is out?
I can't make either one, so.
Okay, so that's not an unfair, it's, anybody else? Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Courtney? Krista? Okay. Brian, you and I will confer, and given that information, we'll be in touch. Meeting next week, okay? We'll do it that way, and kind of settle on a date. But just wanted a heads up on, Brian and I have both conflicts on the 6th and 13th. Good. How'd it go, Katie? Good? Thumbs up. Then we just need one more motion, or check out. Courtney, anything? Troy?
I had the opportunity last week to spend a day down at Brooklyn, helping with the playground build. So check out their beautiful new playground. Kudos to the Brooklyn PTO, and Carrie back here, who did a great job fundraising and leading that effort. So it's beautiful, beautiful new facility down there.
Barb? Tim? Krista? I'll, I have one thing, a happy anniversary, Patty. She was, so, thanks. It's like, you have to have a wife who's understanding to the last 35 years when you spend them at school board meetings on your anniversary.
You're on school board meetings.
Yeah. Dan made the motion, is there a second? Troy, with, thanks, everyone, we did really good work. We're making progress on getting toward our referendum questions. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? We are adjourned at 8:05.